Best thing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll be ready. Yes. So, good morning, everyone. Good Friday morning. I'm Sam Collin. The board special meeting took order on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three at nine fifteen A M. This is a special meeting solely to interview two D P W superintendent candidates. We're going to interview one at nine fifteen and one at ten fifteen. Um, we have the on the agenda that we will um possibly take action after this, but it's not a guarantee. So we've got only as a placeholder. Um, before we get started, there's a couple of things I want to mention. Um, there's four of us here because Ms. Brockio has accused herself from this process from the very beginning because her husband is a contractor with the D P W as far as snowplow goes. So she continues to do that, and we will have no public comment at this meeting at all because it's a special meeting. But I do want to remind, we're doing office hours next week. You and Sam?
Me.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have office hours next week um at six P M in the call hearing room with Ms. Melanowski and Mr. Dennyton. If anyone has an issue they want to discuss. Okay, so with that, um, welcome.
Thank you.
We're gonna give you a chance to introduce yourself first, right? Then we're going to each person's gonna ask about four questions um to try to keep this through forty-five minutes. Then we will give you a chance at the end of it to basically respond to what we talked about today.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, um, so Ms. Melanowski reminded me to let everyone know that for the moment, we're only on Zoom. The YouTube recording will be uploaded later. But out of fairness of both candidates, we're not on YouTube yet. Okay, so welcome. Um, so why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself background?
Um, try to keep it medium short. Uh, so my name is Phil McNulty, currently the water superintendent in Water and Sewer Superintendent in Stoughton. From a personal point of view, uh, you know, I I live in Foxborough, had two grown sons, eighteen and twenty-four, proud of them, good kids. Uh, my hobbies are exercise and sports and try to keep active and fit that way. And uh as far as my career, from a young age, I've always known I wanted to be an engineer and they uh in in the engineering field, say from eighth, ninth grade, and I've I've always loved my career. This is just one, one more step in that career that I think is the step up for me. But hopefully, uh, I'm looking forward to. Um, as far as education goes, I grew up in Brockton, went through the Brockton Public School System and um went to Northeastern for Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. And um eventually obtained my professional engineering license in nineteen ninety-four and civil engineering, registered Massachusetts. The first twenty or so years of my career predominantly spent in conventional um engineering consulting, design, uh, public bidding, construction oversight, managing, and really the last ten, twelve years have been in the uh municipal field with D P W operations, sewer operations, but water operations. Currently, I manage about twenty-five people. Manage a um fourteen million uh water sewer enterprise fund combined, separate but combined total. Also manage about thirty-five million in capital projects over the last seven years. That what that means to me is uh conceptualizing the job, bringing consultants to estimate the job for budgetary purposes, and then vetting those projects through different town boards, bin column, conservation, uh, border selectment, ultimately town meeting and uh and once approved and executing those jobs, constructing, managing your construction of those. Those those jobs generally have ranged in the four hundred thousand to five million uh per project. Keep you some of what it might do. What else can I say?
That's fine. That's a good intro.
A a strength of mine is in the water, water um um treatment and distribution. I know you don't have treatment here necessarily because you're M W R fed community, but uh distribution is, I think that can be a strength, a good fit for the town for me um in terms of supply and willing M W R supplies to other communities um and making future um infrastructure, infrastructure decisions, which we got to those uh decisions.
Okay, so thank you.
That's good enough for now. Bowled on long enough.
From this way to that way. So I'll start then um have to opt to you later. Before we start that, you said something that intrigues me. Your sewer and water are separate enterprise funds, is that what you said? Really? You know, we've got a subject here from the north part. We don't answer our stuff. We wish we did, but we don't. Okay, um, so as you know, the D P W is a complicated department. Uh, they've got a lot on their plate as far as what they are responsible for. So do you believe you've got the background to be able to handle all the various aspects, including water, um, that come under the D P W supervision and and job?
Yeah, so like I said, my early career, um I did a lot of transfer station design, landfill closures, athletic field designs, parks, paving, paving and drainage uh uh facilities, maintenance currently with with the uh facilities I manage now. And uh, you know, it, as you say, it covers a lot of areas. You're probably never gonna find everybody who knows everything about each one of those, but I I've I've worked in uh I've worked in the D P W for uh going on eleven years now and uh managed um the entire D P W at times. So I have the experience to, uh, you know, forestry, snowplow operations, um sanitation.
Why would you have managed the D P W at times?
Uh, just when others are out or on vacation or in some cases, uh, lengthy periods off for medical reasons.
So they would turn to you when that happened?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that one. Um, what do you see as your most significant accomplishments in your work experience? That's part one. I want to start two parts to it. Um, and then what personal and professional traits made it possible and allowed you to achieve those accomplishments?
Um, I've always prided myself on being proactive and somewhat aggressive in in making improvements. I'm not the type of person to just sit around and do the status quo and plug in, you know, day to day and year to year. You know, filling up time, always try to um improve things, whether it be financially, operationally. And uh, I think one of my biggest strengths is managing people um and mentoring. You know, I can be mentored too, and I can learn from other people, but at this point in my career, I have a lot of experience to pass on to others. I mean, I like passing that on to others. The better they can understand, the better the uh the unit can be and 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 overall improvement to the services to the town, so.
Okay, so give us one example of what you consider um a really major specific accomplishment during your
My my current job was, uh, you know, when I first got there, we were using over a million dollars worth of M W R water because our ours Stoughton's pump pumping systems weren't operational. Improved all those and got M W R usage down to about five percent. I can look at as good as bad, good or bad, but in terms of saving money, it saved over a million dollars uh per year.
So to just follow up on that a little bit, so Stoughton has, where does it get its water if it's not in in W R A? Where is it good?
It's on groundwater supplies.
Um, can you describe a situation where you made an important decision that you knew, regardless of what you decided, it was going to be controversial?
Well, just lately, um you know, had to go before the town and 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 advocate for P fast treatment at one of our stations. Um, it it's not a right or wrong, we're mandated by the state, but just bringing the town up to speed on, you know, what is P fast? Everybody's turned up blindsided by it. It was controversial, uh, but it was more more like uh more just educating everybody and bringing them up to speed on what we were required to do with this new uh new standard we had to meet.
Well, that's interesting. We are being asked by Hawkingston to allow them to come through Southborough to connect M W R because of their P fast program too.
Yeah.
It's on the table. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's an interesting people. Um, can you give us an example of your experience developing and ministry? But um, the couple that you're gonna talk today are very budget minded. Um, well, most of us, we were all on the advisory committee, which is science to me, so we all are very conscious in the budget. So tell us about your budgeting um experience and abilities because um that's certainly going to be a part of this job. We would be in charge of the whole D P W budget.
Yeah, so I I I manage and present the operational budget E G F of both water and sewer currently. Um, there's, you know, the expense side and the personnel side. And, you know, once you get it the way you want, it's more more or less just a matter of tweaking at this point from year to year. Uh, sometimes tweaks, sometimes major changes, but so the operational budget, I handle that year to year and um currently doing that now. Um, and then on the other side, I have the capital list of, you know, a wish list of capital projects that I uh try to conceptualize to make improvements um and then estimate with, usually I work with consultants because everybody likes to say a third party, give their opinion, not just mine, but uh you can get those hard estimates or budgetary estimates, I should say, and uh and then advocate for those improvements. Usually ninety-nine percent of the time, they go through.
Do you comfortable with the budgeting process and now I have to work through all the various committees and then get to town meeting?
Yes.
So um related to that, what have your water rates looked like for the last few years?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a vote, but they've been pretty flat.
Yeah. So you haven't had to to um increase rate significantly in the last five years? It's been fairly flat?
It's been flat, yeah.
You expect that to continue?
No, it's not a sustainable thing. Uh, last time they were actually adjusted, they went down, if you can believe that, but uh yeah, they've, they they need to go up. I mean, that inflation, you know, price of pipe has tripled, the price of chemicals have doubled. They're gonna need to go up. But uh, you know, do it, like I said, due to the M W R A um reduction, that's that has saved money and uh we've embarked on a a townwide metering program that has captured lost water and captured lost revenue. So that that line, you know, the meters bill off, you bill the water and the sewer off the same meter. So when the water goes up, the sewer goes up with it. Um, so um, that's, that's improved the uh revenue of about two million per year.
Your retained earnings looks healthy in each one?
It's up and down. When I first got there, it was in the red.
But you understand that concept?
Yes.
And that's
It's a business, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Melanowski, okay, thank you. Take it sound for coming.
Yep, thanks for having me.
My first question is, based on your review on publicly available information on current projects and operations, example staffing, budget, capital of the D P W in Southborough, do you have any initial plans for further potential study or changes based on that review?
Um, I'm not really gonna know intimately some areas until I, you know, from here. Uh, I I read through, skimmed through pretty hard the uh water master plan, so I know it's there. Um, and I have some ideas. Ideas and uh, but you know, those are my ideas. I don't know what the big picture is here. I don't have what you you know, our mothers and fathers, where they want to go with things. So I I have my own ideas and water side, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, this as far as transfer station and recycling, um I'm sure you have something in place, you know, I'd have to uh, I'd have to be there for a while and see what's going on. See what improvements could be made on, you know, what the market is for recycles, recyclables, et cetera.
So have you um come across anything related to like a current project that we either are in the process of or looking to do like a road project or anything like like that that you've seen that um you think you'd like to take a closer look at or um, have you seen how we kind of plan to do road projects um year over year and how we fund that? Or would you be comfortable looking at something like that?
Yes. Yeah, I have experience and, you know, it's been a while, but it's a chapter ninety program. Usually have a pavement management plan. I put those two together and see what the priorities are. And you can put those together, but you have the things you you want to do um as a town.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I feel comfortable with that. Um, you know, I I could see in driving around town that there's a lot of parks and a lot of recreation. It's really good stuff. And I have experience in athletic field design, both uh synthetic and natural turf and you know, stadium lighting and bleachers and all that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, please explain your expectation of communication to the public from yourself regarding upcoming D P W projects, routine operations like road closures and emergency situations.
Um, you know, my experience currently is in um issues, you know, with water, water breaks, service breaks to houses. Um, so they tend to be on the emergency side, which isn't a lot of lead time. You gotta just do it. Um, if we have a project that's that has lead time to it and, you know, knock on doors, uh, if it if it affects eight houses, whatever makes sense. If it affects a whole neighborhood, then you need to do something more, uh, you know, town website. Door knockers, knock on every door, try to, you know, the more upfront stuff you could do, uh, communicate, the less phone calls you get later saying what's going, you know, what's going on.
Right.
But usually, you know, for a water break, we you know, try to get a detail right away and shut the road down if we need to or, but you know, depends how busy the road is, you know. If we can go on and off and get two lanes going, great. Um, it just depends where it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. What areas would you consider relying on outside consultants or expertise and how would you determine that need?
I'd say a lot, you know, I, not that I rely on consultants, but I I I generally find that people want to see a third party opinion. You know, someone who's dedicating their uh their day to day or week on addressing that project and estimating it according to, you know, the current ever changing construction cost estimates that are out there. Um, things on flatlining, right? They keep escalating and and, you know, the consultants are doing that with many towns day to day so they can, they can chase down the number as accurate as they can, even they get want to put contingencies on contingencies, contingencies, because it's just um, but so, you know, I, like I said at the beginning, I I tend to conceptualize um because I've been a consultant. I don't need them to do that for me. Um, and I have full confidence in my own estimating, but I think people like generally to see a third party. So that's where I bring them in.
Okay.
Bring them, you know, tell them what I'm looking for, uh, where I want to go with it, you know. And then um, that way it saves. You gotta pay them to do that, but at least it reduces the scope.
But but you're comfortable with coming up with the kind of the baseline for whatever it is you're looking
Yes.
to do, and it's more like a third party reviewer versus outsourcing all the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And my last question is, please illustrate a a complex task or project during your tenure. Looking back at this project, knowing the results, what, if anything, did you learn from this experience? And what would you do differently if you had the opportunity to do it again in the future?
Yeah, uh, I'm I'm gonna bring up a P fast project again because right on the heels of finishing an improvement to a pump station, we had uh uh, it cost like three million dollars. Uh, six months later, the new regular regulation came out and then it didn't look good because and then I was asked, how can we then include P fast because it wasn't regulation? So it's not something I would do over, but you know, have a have a crystal ball, I would have liked one then.
Yeah.
And uh, because when P fast first came out, they were talking about seventy to a hundred plus petrillion being the standard. When it finally came in, it was twenty, like, oh, jeez, you know, that's that's a game changer. So I wouldn't really say I'd do it over. I just uh wish I had a do over.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Sir Sager?
Thanks. Um, you've already actually addressed uh one of my questions here, for the most part, about experience outside of the water area, a couple of small differences. Um, have you had any experience with cemetery management before you appeared?
Well, you've seen my resume about a hundred years ago. I was in town North Reading as an assistant engineer. I I managed there. At the time, I laid it out on CAD and, you know, seeing boundaries that they had.
Negotiation, heads on side.
Yes. And and um it's funny how loose it was, you know, in a meaning that you'd think that every marker would be uh, you know, down to a survey, you know, a tech in the survey state. But it was
Not quite.
Not quite as accurate as you might think, you know.
Um, how about, we recently contracted with a consultant for pavement management system that is, they've been uh ongoing and has now in the payment for data and they're gonna come back with a report to we think fairly soon now in terms of recommendations. Have you had experience with analytical approaches to pavement management?
Generally, yes. Uh, generally, they rank them, you know, uh, either like a number system or color coding system and they they give you a map and um
Yeah.
you can, you know, try to it's not just as simple as that, though. The money has to match. Um, what other projects might you have overlay on that? You might have a water project you need to get done before you, you know, you don't want to pave it, then go back and do a lot of project or gas or or other utilities. So you use that as a tool to overlay with other uh projects you may have going up.
Just don't use one of those.
Yes, yeah.
Um, okay, how would citizens and customers of your current employer describe customer service that you provide? And what have you done to go beyond the traditional uh scope in terms of reaching out to the community?
In in terms of customer service?
Responded. We were fortunate in some ways of having a fairly educated and persistent population who have issues and they follow those up uh in usually very effective ways. So you you need to be sensitive by the fact that you're gonna get feedback, et cetera.
Right.
Still, we
Yeah, so you know, before you even get that far, the best thing is to do is manage the system or the washing the distribution correctly to prevent, you know, I don't say the dirty waterfalls or, you know, potholes, you know, preventive maintenance is is number one. Uh, but you know, to your point, um uh, whether it's a tree down or a pothole or a dirty waterfall, um just provide the service. I mean, if when calls come in for me right now, they generally go to an admin person. And I try to bring them up to speed and, you know, what to expect and here's how to answer these questions. A lot of times it'll be, well, I want to talk to your boss. So then I, then I, you know, I can't spend all day on the phone, you know, you have to, but if you have, you know, there's certain calls you that just land on you, you have to. I've had real good success in just talking, you know, educating people on the phone, you know, here's what's going on, here's why. Um, in terms of dirty water calls, we had to get any because we we managed the system uh very well. And uh, I won't know intimately that here until I come up here, but we forgot to dirty water calls or um, but it's amazing the calls you get. Uh, and sometimes I'm surprised still.
Some of those rollovers us as well, so we
Yeah.
understand the variety there, intensity of it.
Yeah, and and, you know, people call, they're upset and trying to keep a level head and, you know, information is is good in terms of uh.
Okay. Um, next question, the key skill for a D P W superintendent is being able to identify opportunities to pay grant funding for a variety of projects. What experience do you have in terms of of grant funding from uh particularly state uh funds, for example, and particularly math dot in District Three, which is where we happen to be?
Um, I've gotten grant funding for generators or the uh water sewer stations, uh, half a million. It's a cumbersome process, but you know, it's worth it in the end to get, you know, somewhat quote unquote free money. Uh, some of our water stations did not have backup energy supplies when I first got there. Um, so if you lost power, you lost water. That's so, that wasn't uh sustainable. Um, other grants have been uh on the energy, you know, gap two and now gap three energy savings grants have uh had success with those as well. Um, you know, any, any, anything from lighting to plugs to modus to um V F Ds, variable frequency drives.
Any highway brand experience?
Um, no.
Um, my last one is use an example that the union, the contractor, vendor, or citizen drive most challenging negotiations you've conducted, and why was it so challenging? Which of your negotiating skills turned out to be most effective? Appreciate it. You have to be here, staff union, or?
Yeah.
If you do bargaining agreement.
It's an association. It's a weaker union. Uh, um, so when you say negotiation, you mean with uh with collective bargaining?
Either either collective bargaining or contract or any challenging experience.
Um, plenty of negotiations with the state on water supply issues uh and on sewer issues. Depending on what division you're working with at at the uh district, region you're you're in. Um, the collective bargaining agreement doesn't change very much. It's usually a couple of new things come up each year and it's of uh I've disagreed with some things and fought back on those and been successful. Uh, but, you know, it's usually horse trading, you know. Uh, but plenty, plenty of negotiations with the state on on uh how to how to uh upgrade water supply systems.
With D E P particularly?
Yes, yeah. Um, both for water and suicide.
What's the most effective technique for dealing with that?
I can make an appointment, go down and meet with them. I've been there many, you know, if I'm close to it, it's in Lakeville, the southeast. They they send me guys in Worcester here. But I've been in Worcester too. Uh, for my time in Norfolk, we're in the Central District, but that's, you know, that's the best way to start is, uh, you know, for a while, it was Zoom calls and calls with during COVID, but uh you know, in-person meetings uh to to kind of uh get the get the ball rolling. Like basically, they're gonna look for a way, you know, what you want, and they're gonna tell us what we want, and it's, it just saves time. Um, in terms of, uh, you don't want to get off in the wrong direction with your project. It's just gonna be a waste of time and money. Try to get them on board with your, your, your thinking and your and your ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
My first question is. How do you manage yourself and deal with prioritizing active and demanding role? With priorities that change daily or even hourly?
Yeah. So for me right now. The tanks have to be filled every day. That's in the pumps after pump, in in the sewage chest become. That's number one, day to day operations. If that's not happening or if there's a problem in that area, that's that's where I go. You know. Meetings and emails and all that is part of it, you know. Is part of what you do, but. That has to be number one, operations day to day. If things are running smoothly, then then you can come out of that and do other things, plan reviews. But you know, where I start off with my crews that I manage now is I. I I go into the next day, the day before was the end of the day and start making, you know, daily assignments and I have a worksheet that. You know. It kind of lets everybody know what to expect the next day. That's gonna change based on sick calls, vacation and things like that. But you make, so you make an adjustment so that's scheduled the very next day. That's managing that time. And like I said, managing my time depends on what's, you know, if there's a fire, put out or not.
And so the, you know, the staff that you work with, about how many people do you manage and how is that organized?
So overall, it's it's about twenty five. Some of it is a few office staff that just deals with. Changing out readers and, you know. Dealing with the real estate agents to do final reads and things like that. And then I have basically four, four crews that work for me, four foremen and four crews. Two on the water side, two on the studio. And. You never run out of things to do. I mean, the infrastructure is all, there's always things to do. You know, maintaining the maintaining the sewer system, jetting and cambering to look for leaks. That's that's from the collection side and then. Thirteen sewer pump stations to maintain. That's two pumps at each station. That's twenty, you know, twenty six pumps. It's a lot of, a lot of things that can go on. And then, like I said, the infrastructure for each of those, they're all buildings. They all have roofs, they all have plumbing, they all have HVAC. Doors, etc. to be maintained, so. Tremendous amount to maintain. Never run out of things to do.
My next question is, what do you do to stay regularly informed about best practices in other communities DPWs? And can you please provide an example of how your department? Was successfully able to integrate renewed best practice from another. So kind of a two part question.
Yeah. So. Unless it's gonna directly answer your question, but I I. I try to get the guys that work for me to schools a lot, you know, update their licenses and just stay up on everything. It. Towns. Tend to be sort of parochial in themselves, their little bubble, you know, and the next time over tends to be in their bubble. So your question is a good one. It's not. I don't go over to Canton every day and say, how are you guys doing today? I got my own things to do, but. But you try to get the classes and try to see. And I try to get myself and guys out there for that exact reason. Like, how do you guys? How do you guys flush? How do you, what hydrants do you guys use? What's? You know. Because that forces them to interact with other towns. So I can't say specifically that I've learned anything, but. Sometimes just going and reaffirming what you're doing is is. Is what other towns are doing is all it takes, you know. What do you guys use for chemicals? How do you guys do this? How do you guys flood?
And are you a member, a member of any professional associations where you regularly attend their meetings and go look for a new idea and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, knowing the waterworks, mass waterworks. There's, you know. Over in Halston actually is, is where we're doing the waterworks. We try to get there. That's where most of the guys, mostly people in the region go to that place. To get their, you know, get their credits for updating their licenses, renewing their licenses. And that's. That's kind of the best melting pot right there. Try to do that as much as possible. And that, not only for that reason, it just. Just keeps them sharp and. And just finding out what the latest technologies are. Chemical feed pump systems, things like that.
Thank you. My next question is, what ideas do you have in mind for how Southborough's DPW can become a leader in sustainability and environmentally conscious?
Well, so the, you know, the low hanging fruit is is the gap grants, energy savings through modus and drives. And I know you have a couple. Water pump stations that tapped into the M W R A pipes. Aqueducts that went through town. You know, that's specific to water. As far as. As as far as the highway department and the transfer station area down there. I'd have to see what's there, whether it's, you know. Your solar panels or what have that. These these outfits will come in and analyze your infrastructure and tell you what's. You know, what the potential is. So that that might be a place to start is have. Horizons or rise. This this different office will come in and go through your system and see where the energy saving can be ascertained. Heating system, lighting. I guess.
Okay.
That's right, it's that.
Thank you. And my last question is. You you kind of alluded to this earlier, you know, that part of your job is mentoring people, being mentor. Part of the role is as being apartment managing. So can you tell us about a time where you, when you had to deal with some of who is not meeting your expectations? And how did that work out? We're kind of a difficult, you know, personnel HR situation.
Yeah. So I've been in Stoughton about seven and a half years now and I've suspended people twice in that time. And it's usually for good reason. I tried to. You know, we all want to be players managers, so to speak, you know, I I would want to back up my guys when when I can. All they need to do is give me an excuse to back them up. I don't back them up. But when they don't, they get, you know, they. It's not gonna work out, but so. So I've had them ahead. In those cases, I've made, you know. Suggested, recommended suspensions and. And I've gotten full support when I when I do, you know. Draw a line in the sand and suspend, you know. It's not fun, you know, but that's part of the job. You know, but what I would say, I got support, I got support from their own. Their own board, you know. The president, vice president, treasurer of their board.
Of their association?
Yes.
Okay.
It usually, it's never gone further than that, never gone to the town. Administrator or manager in Stoughton. Because it hasn't had to go that far. But. You know. You have to do what you have to do. It's usually for. It's for good, you know, it's for good reason and. And you can't, you can't let that stuff go because there's. Twenty three other guys looking at that. And if they, if they say, oh, he can get away with that, then then I can get away with that too. You just lose everybody, so. Has to be done.
Thank you. So that's all the questions that I have. So turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
So we're doing fine on time. So with everyone's question, I've got a couple of follow ups to especially your questions. From Mr. McNulty, it sounds like it's your water and sewer operation is separate from the rest of it physically, that you're not in the same office with. The DPW superintendent that's handling the roads, transfer station, is that true?
The office is separate. The manpower and equipment is shared, depending on, you know, I collaborate with the DPW director daily. See what's going on.
But you're still in separate buildings, obviously?
Yes.
Okay, now, transfer station, it sounds like you noted to it. During one of the comments, so you're familiar with transfer station operations. I don't know if you've got one in Foxborough where you live or somewhere you work.
Neither.
Neither?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but you have been involved?
Yes, I've done designs.
Transfer station here is actually pretty important to say, no, it's actually. Not just a place for refuse and recycling. It's a kind of a gathering place. People, you know. Sell cookies and and campaign and stuff. So it's actually a pretty important place in Southborough.
Yeah.
But I want to get to the recycling, recycling is also very important in Southborough. We've got a whole separate recycling center in front of the normal place where you truck your trash. We have had issues as everyone else had in the past few years as far as plastic recycling. So how familiar are you with the world of recycling? Because that's gonna be important in this job to to really understand it and make sure we're doing everything we can in Southborough to recycle as much as we can profit.
I'm not up to speed. I could tell you that, like, I I don't think the market is very good right now. It's going up and down in the past when it first started, you know, the market went up. And it's really. The impetus to recycle is really strong. Now it's kind of is weakening. In in Stoughton, they they burn trash for energy down at C Mass, so. At at least if if they don't, if you don't have a strong recycling program, at least you're getting energy out of it. You know, it's one way to look at it, but. In terms of doing the environmental. Right thing, you know, you want you want to recycle. But. The market is whatever it is. I don't know what it is right now. I I don't think it's that great.
So thank you. Anyone else will say?
I have. So. You have a lot of employees underneath you just for water and sewer. We do not have that type of staff in Southborough. And. I'm gonna look at Mr. Purple because I want to share that full health that we have right now. For water or for both, for for all of DPW?
Well, I'll say twenty two.
You have the entire department, so. Can you just speak to that transition of having so many? In water and sewer to having that that many for all of DPW operations?
Yeah, well, it essentially be about the same total.
Yes.
So. But I I can see your point. I kind of, my time in Farc and in Norfolk was like that. It's about the same. Population, about the same, all septic, what in 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 almost fully water. Distribution supplied. So equated to that. I, you know. I I think it's basically gonna be the same, it's just, you know, whether I'm managing water and so the sewer is off the table, you know, the pump stations, there's no. Collection system to maintain, so it's just a matter of refocusing. What your crews are doing, you know, maintaining parks. You know. Trees and and. The highway, doing, you know, potholes and other small projects and so forth. But.
But that doesn't scare you, I guess. Okay.
Yes, that's my correct. I don't want to assume that, but twenty years of engineering and construction that covers like. Pretty much everything.
Okay.
I mean, what you do in engineering depends on where the work is, right?
Right.
Changes over. Five year periods.
And just one other follow up. So I know you mentioned. Field design, so DPW is pretty involved in our field maintenance as well. And one other area that I I don't think we asked you about was vegetation management. So can you just talk about field maintenance and vegetation management?
Like in bases?
Yeah, or poison, you know, poison ivy control and. That falls under our DPWs.
Well. You know, the roadside. The roadside maintenance, you know, where they have a side cutter and all that is something that's gonna be, you know. Important.
Yeah.
In in terms of meaning, maintaining site distance for. Cars that e- either traveling down the road around the curve or at an intersection, you're looking that way and you can't see it's. It's there's a safety issue there, so that that'd be number one. As far as maintaining a synthetic field, there's special equipment for that, you know, the brooms and the wash downs. To keep them, you know, virus and bacteria free. And and then. I don't know how extensive you are into the field maintenance, you know. It could be just mowing or it could be getting to the whole thing where you're aerating it. And, you know, applying chemicals. I I'm not sure what you do there.
So we have a contractor that does the field mowing, correct? But there's a lot of coordination between DPW and the rec department. In terms of. Field maintenance. And I don't know who does the aerating.
I believe that is absolutely.
So it's maintaining that contract. And it's within your operational budget, if not in recs.
Got you. But, you know, so obviously some coordination with rec department be, you know, advisable. But. Become better be on my. My purview. As far as vegetation. You know. Taking down trees is probably gonna be a tricky thing, I would imagine, you know, people. You have good healthy trees and you take one down, you're gonna have some upset people, so.
Yes.
We get that all the time in Stoughton, like. You know, is a tree dying or is it? Or or is it on the town's property or is it slightly on the own, you know, the private side, so. Trees are always tricky, you know, a lot of time people get upset about, so. You just wanna. I don't know what the process is there, but we'll make sure to do it right.
There's been a lot of work around. Process in the last. Nine to twelve months. And there's also been a lot of work done by planning board related to tree bylaw. So.
To save trees.
To 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 better define the process. On. On it.
To protect the public shade trees, yes, yeah.
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 Yeah, so a lot of times. A lot of times people looking, you know, want the town to come in and take down a dead tree. Yeah, and I think everybody agrees, let's take the dead tree down before it falls on somebody's car or house or whatever. You try to do preventive there. Hopefully, you know, things like that would be pretty streamlined because. Say again, safety. If you have a sidewalk going and. You want to go this way, you got to take ten trees down or you want to meander it. Those are decisions the. That everybody's gonna have to get together on, what's the best way to do this? I see a lot of the. Smaller to medium sized towns, they go with the meandering sidewalk. They're kind of. They look all right, you know, they save a lot of trees. So I guess it depends on what. What the project is, what the condition tree is and whose property is the one, but having a streamlined process would be good because. Otherwise, you're sitting around twiddling your thumbs, wasting time on a project that needs to, you know, everybody wants to get done.
Yes. We can do more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One quick follow up on the grant question I had. You have experience, there's a lot of federal money out there. Do you have experience in terms of getting federal? Infrastructure grants. They probably work private.
Yes. Right now, the infrastructure money is, it's down a trickle down. And it's it's based on. Environmental justice, you know, E G P A, environment, there's a portion coming out for. Depending on your community environment, there's a piece of environmental justice grant. And then there's a piece of emerging contaminants. It's covering anywhere from twenty five to forty percent on your projects, or water projects in this case. So I've I've applied and been successful with the state on those.
Right. Yeah, I have a, it's okay, I have a long question to you. I have a, it's not asking question. Because of the kind of labor market. In, you know, twenty twenty three, in addition to. Managing employees, you have, one of the other challenges that we face is. Recruiting. For positions that become vacant because there's just so much to live in the labor market. And I don't know if you can speak to what experience you find, you're finding in Stoughton about. You know, we're gonna need some energy to help try to, you know, keep. Have some creative ideas, fill vacant positions. Kind of go the extra mile, you know, other departments in the town also. Facing that same, if you can speak to that, what you, what can you offer?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm a water and sewer superintendent, but I I've I've done a lot of. So, yeah, so I'm a water and sewer superintendent, but I I've I've done a lot of interviewing, not not just in my, not just for water and sewer guys, but the truck drivers and uh, sanitation and forestry. Uh, just because sometimes that was my role in, you know, covering the whole town, but um, I probably hired twenty five people since, but I've seen what you're talking about. I've seen we put out an advertisement for a truck driver that used to get twenty five, twenty seven resumes, you know. Now you get to, you know, if you're lucky. It's tough. So you really, you know, you 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 call people, you know, to make sure they have awareness. You call friends of friends and say, hey, you know, just get the word out there. That's um, that's what's going on. You're fighting for people and and you know, and then they have their, you have your rate structure. So it's not like you're on the private industry. We give you fifty dollars an hour and try to get, you know, get the guy in. You're limited by what the uh, what the salary structure is. So you uh, it's, it's something I've been involved in right away and I see, you know, right along and and I've uh, I've had real good success with the people I've hired and most of of the twenty five I've been involved with hiring, recommended. We probably have all of them, maybe one that lucked something like that. But so I have a good eye for uh, or you know, you're not just looking at the resume, but uh, when I interview people, I can feel them all pretty good to see if they they're going to be a successful match. But uh, we're leaving, leaving like it is rough. I'm here.
Thank you, Mitch McNulty, for for coming in this morning and giving me apologies for the other night.
No problem at all.
So why don't you just take compliments for everyone take and just let us know anything else that you forgot to say in the meeting or that you just want to add to?
I I'd just like to say thank you for having me. I'm glad I made it this far in the process and I'd be excited to uh, to to join the town. I think I'm a good match. Uh, I know you don't have a town engineer, at least I think I know you know, um, and I I could fill that all. Uh, whether you down the road have an engineer, I could mentor that person if they were younger or, you know, less experienced than I. Um, and I think from what I know about your your water system, I could be a tremendous asset there. That's what I do. Be be a good uh, match for the town and especially those areas, engineering and water and and all the all the other DPW things that go on. I I'm involved in, you know, I have been involved in over the years. So I think I'm a good match.
We had a town engineer until two thousand eleven and then have not had a um, town engineer assistant, but there is discussion given whether we should we should do that anymore. So it's actually a question that's being asked by some.
Mm hmm.
So thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks to be here. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you. You too.
No, I'm fine.
You're good.
Hi, how are you?
So we are resuming the meeting at ten thirty. So welcome. Um, so what we're going to do is, starting with me, we're going to ask about four questions.
Okay.
Should take about forty five minutes, but we want to start off with you having a chance to let us know what you want us to know before we start asking specific questions.
Sure. Um, so I have been with Wellesley for sixteen years. Um, and I started in engineering. Um, I did a lot of road reconstruction projects, things like that. And then um, I went over to Water and Sewer and I managed all of the contracts. Um, I did, basically, I started in one position in Water and Sewer where I did all the contracts. Then I managed um, twenty two people. While I've I've been there and um, yeah, I love working for a DPW and I just think that this would be a great opportunity. I'm right down the street. Um, and, you know, I would love to, you know, kind of further my career a little bit. Um, the DPW director in Wellesley is fairly newer in the position. So um, just looking for a little bit of a change. I'm so sorry. I thought I shut this off.
Well, thank you very much. And so my first question is, you have spent a lot of time on the water side.
Mm hmm.
Our DPW, um, you know, Southborough's not well, so I'll tell you that. Um, quite a few differences. Um, ten thousand people here. The DPW superintendent has a big portfolio, um, lots of things to to deal with, lots of problems to deal with, et cetera. So water certainly one of them, um, but other things too. So I would like for you to speak to um, your ability to manage the entire DPW portfolio, not just the water feed.
So I actually worked with all the different departments when I was in engineering. So I do have some familiarity with the parks department, um, you know, grounds, things like that. Um, I also spent a lot of time working with highway. So I do have a background in, you know, construction, things like that, plowing. Um, all of my employees had to plow, so I did get involved in that aspect of it. Um, and I think that managing um, a group of twenty two guys in all different aspects of water, sewer, all of those kinds of things give me a good background.
Okay, can you be more specific though? Um, explain to us how you would understand what to do on the roadside, um, the cemetery side, the transfer station side, um, recycling, et cetera.
Yeah, um, so we, that's probably the area I have the least amount of knowledge with. So I would definitely need to spend some time learning about the transfer station, how everything operates. Um, I I do have meetings every week um, where we all get together. So I do know about Wellesley's recycling. Um, and I, um, I'm trying to, is there anything more specific that? Okay.
All right. So um, what do you see as your most significant accomplishments in your work experience? That's part two part question.
Okay.
Right. Um, in that what what personal professional traits do you have that made it possible and allowed you to achieve those accomplishments?
So um, I've worked a lot on getting grants for the town. Um, I actually have three grants uh, right now that are looking to improve the way that we kind of manage all the work. So I wrote um, and reviewed fifteen different proposals for asset management. Um, I also, I've done a lot of work at the treatment plant, so I have experience with running an actual building, doing an upgrade um, for the heating, things like that. Um, I was basically the primary person that made a lot of equipment upgrades um, instead of um, we bought a backdoor, so it's a little bit safer for um, the employees to work. And I think that just, I I I'm a lot of, I'm a go getter. I, you know, I look for grant opportunities, things, things of that nature.
Because go a little bit further, why are you a go getter? Give us an example of something to show that you're a go getter.
Um, I think that, you know, just um, you know, looking into where to, you know, make improvements, where to find money. Um, I've contacted the D E P to see what grant opportunities um, are are there and um, I don't, I don't know how to kind of elaborate on that, but um, I've, you know, I've made a lot of improvements over time and I've made the workplace a little bit safer. Um, my employees would probably tell you that um, I'm fair. Um, I definitely have had hard conversations when I've needed to with different employees and um, you know, but I also like to praise them because I think that building that kind of environment makes it a lot better to work, um, you know, to come to work and you want to hear, you want to hear when you're doing well, but you also need to have a conversation when, you know, things aren't going great. So um, that's, that's a little bit more about me.
You got it. All ready? Um, can you describe a one situation where you made an important decision that you knew was going to be controversial, regardless of what you did? And how did you handle it?
Um, I'm trying to think of an example of something that was controversial. Um, probably making the guys use um, better safety equipment in the field. And, you know, the DPW employees usually stay at a place for a long time and they had, um, they weren't using shoring or trenching or and anything to make it safer. Um, when they had to get into a trench and I had to enforce that. They didn't like it, but it's something that was important to enforce.
Where does Wellesley get its water?
Um, so we have three treatment plants. And we're also, yeah, we're a partial M W R A community.
So you're 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 both, you do both. So you've got it. Um, have you been involved in the rate setting process?
Um, no, because our accounting department generally handles that. So I do a lot with the budget, um, our especially our capital budget. Um, I've been reviewing that and setting a five year plan for all the budgets, probably for the last ten years.
Okay, so you're intimately involved in the budgeting process?
Yes.
Is Wellesley an enterprise fund for water and sewer separate or just one?
Um, just one enterprise fund.
Okay, so can you give us another example of your experience developing wealth? We just kind of said, okay, so you are very involved in the budget process, okay, all the way through.
Mm hmm.
Okay, do you actually uh, go to town meeting and there to answer?
No, the director does that, but I do all the prep work before town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are your budgets normally accepted as you put them together by the various committees have to go through before they get to town meeting? Okay, so not much feedback?
No, not a lot at all.
Okay, Ms. Melanostis. Okay.
Hi, my name is.
Hi, thank you.
My first question is, based on your review on publicly available information on current projects and operations, including staffing, budget, capital, et cetera, of the Southborough DPW, do you have any initial plans for further study or changes based on that review?
I think that um, I would want to get to know the people, the workings, how um, the budgets are set here, what um, you know, your priorities are. And I don't think I would make any changes right off the bat unless there was something that I saw that was a necessary change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and we have about twenty two people for our entire DPW.
Yeah.
Um, which obviously is a lot smaller by division if you kind of break it out that way. Um, so do you have any concerns about going from a large water to the division, water and sewer division to a?
No, I talked to Mark about that when um, we had our interview and he explained to me that it's kind of like a all hands on deck when you need people. And um, that it kind of operates as like a team organization a little bit more than Wellesley probably does.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay, um. So if if there's nothing that you would initially look at further, um, can you speak to us a little bit about um, your familiarity with road maintenance and um, you know, road projects? Um, yes, you know, that that seems to be, that's a a lot of the focus that we um, get feedback on. Um, so can you speak to your background on that a little bit?
Yeah, so I use, well, when I first started, I did a lot of surveying, so I'm kind of familiar with like the whole process as it goes. I would do the initial survey, um, create the plans on AutoPad. And then if a like a a consulting company needed to get involved, I would be the one to kind of meet with them, talk to them about the project. And then um, I did the day to day. Uh, we had a huge road reconstruction job that that one that I'm talking about, it's like I went through the entire process and I was just a staff engineer at the time, but I did go to all the weekly meetings and do updates um, with board members and things like that. You're welcome.
My next question is, please explain your expectation on communication to the public from yourself regarding upcoming DPW projects or routine opera operations like road closures or emergent situations.
So um, uh, again, I talked to Mark about this. Um, I like to get uh, social media involved if um, we started Twitter, um, and we how we kind of started it in Wellesley at least is we got the police more involved. I um, worked with the police department a lot to start our social media because they had a more robust one. Um, but I do think it's very important, especially with road jobs that are inconveniencing people um, and uh, updating websites, having people urge to sign up for website or the website so that they can get notified. Um, those are things I also worked on.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, just to piggyback on that a little bit, um, in terms of like water main breaks or um, a water issue at a at an active fire, what kind of experience do you have with those situations?
So we do a lot of um, hydrant maintenance. Um, we actually flush twice a year and while we're flushing, we check, you know, for the the age of the hydrant. Um, make sure that there's uh, gates on all of our hydrants because it's important that you don't have to shut down a major road and um, those are things to look for when you're not as busy. Is there a way that, you know, we can you know, keep keep things maintained? So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Um, what areas would you consider relying on outside consultants for expertise and how would you determine that need?
Um, so I don't know, do you, I I wasn't sure if you guys work with um, a lot of different consultants. Um, not really.
No, we, I I think the the way that we've tried to do things is you find, you know, one consultant that can that can serve your needs and everything. So we don't, we don't spread it out.
Okay.
You know, across five or six different consultants.
Okay, um, so I generally, if, you know, if you can't do the work in-house, I don't know if, you know, you make your own plans here, um, if you have engineers on staff to do that. No. Okay, um, so then you would, like Mark said, you'd find a consultant that you typically work with. And it helps, I think, to get comfortable with the people and the staff at the consultants. Um, one of my references is actually a woman that I've worked with. We changed out all of the water meters um, in Wellesley. It was a three year project and we were trying to do it during COVID. So I do know about getting a lot of pushback, you know, from angry residents and um, they would forward most of the, I would say about ninety percent of the calls come to me after the administrative assistant can't really handle it or calm somebody down. So um, I do work a lot with the public and they were jokingly calling me the resident whisperer during the meter project because I would just listen and I think that that's really the way that you deal with people when they're upset about something is to listen and a lot of people just want to be heard. And then if you make them feel like they're being heard, I think that it um, it helps kind of calm them down. Um, so.
So so you try to be the face, the face of that and then you would figure out kind of what you can't handle in-house and that's how you would decide.
Exactly.
What needs to go.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, and why, why were they upset about the meters getting changed out? Was like a lack of communication?
No, it was because people didn't want um, people going into their home during COVID. So that was the tough part. It was during the pandemic, we were trying to change all the meters. We didn't want to waste all this money that we had set aside. So it made it harder because Waste all this money that we had set aside, so it made it harder because. The project was supposed to be only a year and a half and it ended up being three years, we did work with a contractor that did all the um most of the changeouts. And their staff, you had to really. Watch over them because they were not putting numbers in right, sometimes we had to go back into homes. Um, and so to try to explain to a customer, hey, y- you let us in. That was very nice of you, but we now have to come back because we didn't do it right the first time. So that was a bit of a challenge.
Okay, and would, did you let residents know ahead of time that you were?
Yes, we sent.
Pushed back initially too, or was it more after you have to come back a second time?
So it it was um a little bit of both. Um, we did get some initial pushback, um it just, people just weren't comfortable. At the time, letting, you know, us come in and change out their water meter, so we did put those people towards the end. Um, which was tough to keep track of. All of the information because it was all tied into munis and um our billing system, so. We had to make sure that we were getting correct reads and ro- write account numbers and all of that, so it was a lot of managing. Spreadsheets and just managing, you know, so we had to manage, not only making sure that the billing was. Being done correctly, but we also had to make sure that all of the information that was programmed in because it was an AMI system. So all the information that was programmed into that um reading transmitter. Had to be correct and match what was in our billing system, so that was a, that was a really big project.
And what was the, why did you time it with the pandemic, was it already?
No, so we had started it um before the pandemic.
Okay.
And then everything happened and we were already. I would say about thirty percent in.
Okay.
So.
So we really couldn't stop.
No, because we had a contract with.
That you would.
The, yeah, with the installer. So.
Risked having a probably cost.
Yeah.
You know, losing your pricing on that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, please illustrate a complex task or project during your tenure, looking back at this project, know it now knowing the result, what if? Anything, did you learn from this experience? And what would you do differently if you had the opportunity to do it again in the future?
So it would probably be the meter project because it was um a multimillion dollar project and like I said, we had to get into every single home. And um what I would do differently is. Probably, I think what we learned from it early on was really doing. Um, checks and balances on all of the information, so we actually hired a consultant just to do that. They uh Weston and Sampson provided us with an a a junior level staff member. And they just did all the checks and balances, so that was something we learned early on and they were able to dedicate a staff member to us.
Hmm, okay, great, that's it, we're ready.
Thanks, thank you, welcome, I lived twenty years in Wellesley, so uh. Great job, it's a good place to operate, to get a great experience there. Interesting. Um, you've already addressed uh parts of my first question, which is the span of work activity. Just to focus on a couple of specific points, uh one of the hot buttons for us has been trees.
Trees.
In terms of public state trees.
Okay.
And uh so uh what kind of experience have you had in terms of managing the tree process as far as this cutting dead trees?
Well, um, I didn't really do a lot of that, but I did have to do tree surveys. So it would tell us where the trees were on the property, um and then we created an our G I S map. Um, a layer of all the public street trees and that's available, I think it's available on Maps Online now, so um. That's about the the. The long and the short of, yeah.
Another uh issue of interest is pavement management, and we recently contracted a consultant to help us uh affect the pavement.
Yep. So I, Wellesley is in the process of actually doing their research on a pavement management system. Um, I hear about it at our technology meetings, um. And that's, I I don't know what system they're choosing to go with because I haven't really had a lot of experience with that. But I do have experience with, you know, managing um likes, like I had mentioned before, um. Asset management, um so I I read all those contracts for asset management and um I. Did a lot of research on um what programs are best and what is, you know, most cost-effective, things like that.
Another area of frequent interest is stormwater management.
Oh, yes. Yes, um when I first started, I actually wrote a um SOP for. Um illicit discharge and I had to do a survey where I walked along. Um, the different streams in town and located um places of illicit discharge. Um. And I'm trying to think what else I did with stormwater, I did a lot more in engineering and that would have been my first five years.
The final area of interest is DPW managing cemetery as well.
No, we don't have any um public cemeteries in Wellesley, so I don't.
Interesting.
I did, I did see a little bit about that.
Lead into my next question.
Yeah.
Is how would citizens or customers of your current employer describe your customer service service? Uh, that you provide, what have you done beyond the traditional norm of the area of customer service?
So. In a lot of ways, um I feel that I go above and beyond with customer service, um. Because that's what the people really expect from a DPW, um. I, so like I had mentioned, I take the time to listen to any issues that they might have, um I'll actually make house calls if I need to. Um, especially if we saw that, you know, somebody had a high water bill or something like that. It's easy enough to just go into the house and say this toilet's running and here's some dye tabs and um. So I I I do, we do make house calls all the time.
Hmm. And and again, I think that uh we can have seen increasing pressure from the public. In terms of customers who have issues uh that they're concerned about, sometimes they're difficult to address. For a variety of reasons, but a DPW.
Yeah.
How do you deal with somebody who would be resistant to the pressure?
Um. It's, I have one resident that I can think of that. She called, I remember her calling me because we were cleaning and lining water mains, but we didn't have it in the budget to do theirs that year, so they had. A lot of um dirty water calls. I remember days of sitting and listening to her for twenty, thirty minutes about the same issue, um. The best that I could do is go out to her home, um test the water and um. You know, make sure that she knew it was safe, it just was a little bit discolored because she lived on a dead end, so um things like that I've done over time.
Hmm. Um, the key skill for a DPW superintendent is being able to identify opportunities for and obtain grant funding.
Yes.
For a variety of projects. And what expertise do you have in this area, you've actually mentioned a couple of those, and do you have significant relationships with? Uh, key DPW-related grant funding organizations, particularly at the state level like Math dot, District Three.
I don't know them there, well, um I, every year I work with the Sustainable Energy Committee. Um, and they have a grant opportunity to, um Wellesley is looking to go more sustainable. As most towns are and um we work every year, so I've done. Four different projects with them where we got grant funding for that, um we had a P pass issue in Wellesley. And I was able to obtain a D P grant for that um to do interim treatment. Um, so then I also got a grant for our asset management. Um, there's grant opportunities available from the D P and clean waters for um upgrading different. Asset management things and um other useful tools for, I would think it would be similar to um. But you mentioned pavement management, yep.
Um, using an example with a union, a contractor, a vendor or a citizen, describe the most challenging negotiations you've conducted. Why was it so challenging and which of your negotiating skills are the most effective?
So I haven't been involved in negotiations, uh contract negotiations because that's handled by our um. Well, we have an executive director in Wellesley, so um she actually handles all of the um negotiations. But I have been involved in um. Wh- when they file grievances, so I do the first steps for grievances usually, um. And then from there it goes up, up the chain.
My question, Andrew. Thank you, good point, um. My first question is, how do you manage yourself and deal with prioritizing tasks? An active and demanding role, priorities that change daily around you?
Um, I always joke that I go in every day with a plan and that plan a lot of times goes out the window because. There could be a, you know, water main break, there could be, um you know, different employees that didn't show up that day. Um, so I think that I'm good in emergency situations, um we had. Um, down in the lower falls of Wellesley where all the restaurants are, we had a sewer backup and it was a historic issue. That um it ended up affecting all of the restaurants down there, so I stayed until one o'clock in the morning. One night and called um National Water Main who we use. And our employees and their employees had to end up, it was, it was a disgusting job, but they ended up having to. Um, backed her out all this grease and just so we could get the restaurants back. Running for, you know, the citizens, so um. I've been on a lot of emergency type situations and um I think I do. Pretty good under pressure, making sure that I call and prioritize who to call, um. I have, you know, I I have good relationships with a lot of our vendors and I think that that's helped us to get response. From um, you know, the different vendors that we had to work with.
Hmm. And um what's the size of the the number of people you manage and could you speak to kind of how that's organized? You mentioned number of crews.
So. It's the hierarchy is there's a superintendent and then I'm the assistant superintendent, um. He really handled a lot of the D P reporting, he liked to do that and he didn't really care for. Doing a lot of the um, you know, issues that came up with the employees, so I. Really oversaw and I wrote um all of the reviews for everybody, um it was, like I said, it's. About twenty-two people, give or take, um depending on, it's just been difficult to hire people right now. Um, I know that that's a challenge for a lot of places, but specifically DPWs because. People are retiring, um and it seems like it's more difficult to get, you you know, a younger generation or. You know, um people that. Uh, you know, the people that have worked there for twenty-plus years, um they have a lot of knowledge and so. One of my priorities was to get a lot of that knowledge before they leave, so. I don't know if that answered your question.
Um, so my next question is, what do you do to stay regularly informed about best practices in other communities DPWs? And can you please provide an example of how your department was successfully able to integrate a new best practice for another?
Sure, um, I didn't, I don't have a lot of experience with, you know, um the DPW as a whole. Organizations, but I did attend a lot of trainings and things, I actually gave some trainings for Mass Water Works. Um, and New England Water Works, I was heavily involved in both of those organizations, um. And. I s- I would, I set up a lot of trainings for the DPW as a whole, um. Once combines started, uh that's with all the contracts, you have to advertise on combines. I set up all training for everybody in the DPW and I wrote an SOP up with screenshots and everything. Um, to make it easier for people, um so I. I I worked with, I go to, I try to get to as many like conferences and things like that and. When something like, um you know, combines comes up, then I can help everyone else, so. Yeah, I didn't just do it for um water and sewer, I would do it for the whole DPW.
Okay, and um. Next question, what ideas do you have in mind for how South Rose DPW can become a leader in sustainability and environmental consciousness?
Yeah, so um I think that speaks to the grant that I would go for every year, um working with other town departments is very important. Um, I've worked with the police department a lot over my time, I've worked with the Sustainable Energy Committee, um. I've, I'm trying, I I've worked with all different um people in town hall. Um, so I think it's really about communication and um, you know, making sure that you stay up on things and then. Helping everybody once something new comes down the pike.
Just, just to follow up to that.
Yeah.
Don't think, has anyone, did anyone before mention transfer station or transfer station? So I believe Wellesley has a transfer.
Yeah, it's the, it's called the R D F.
A good, alright.
It is a very good.
So I understand that maybe there's this little bit of a similar culture in Wellesley, you know, to some degree, okay. Transfer station isn't just a place where you throw your trash, it's. Uh, people, it's more kind of a community gathering space in some way, so it's kind of hyperbolic, so with that in mind. Do you have any ideas about?
So.
You don't have experience in something you'd be interested in.
No, um, we have a take it or leave it section and that gets very hostile, so they had to. They had to um. Have volunteers.
Mediators.
Yeah, they had to have mediators basically, and so it's only opened at certain times, we had to. Make sure that it was open enough, but not too much, and then also it had to be pleased a little bit as well.
And uh so my last question, um can you tell us about a time when you had to deal with someone who was not meeting your expectations? How did it work out? So really, question about, you know, challenging HR personnel decisions you had to deal with as a.
So I um re- fairly recently in the last year, had an employee that's directly under me. Um, and I would give him kind of three things to do, I would ask him to check this, do this and do that, he would do one. But not all three of them, and I wasn't sure at first if it was. Me or, you know what I mean, so I actually had to have him in my office and say. Um, I'm, I continuously give you tasks and you're really only accomplishing one of them. And he said, I didn't even realize I was doing it, and I said, all right, well, then I'm probably gonna have to follow up with you a little bit more. Um, and on a more frequent basis, but I don't like to micromanage people either, so it felt like I had to find a little bit of a balance with that. So.
Hmm. Um. I think you talked about you had to have some role in grievance process or describe that a little bit more, how the. The union is structured in in um Wellesley.
Sure, um so there is a union that includes the municipal light plant and it includes all of the. Um, DPW employees that are not in a management role, um. We have, we don't have a lot of grievances. I tried to kind of find ways to not have a grievance because. If there is, oh, you know, if there's something that an employee wants to talk to you about, they should be able to talk to you without, you know, going through a formal grievance process, but. I did have um a couple and. It, it is generally, um, we weren't, as managers, we weren't doing anything that wasn't within the contract. Um, so there's not a lot of grievances that were won, but um, yeah, I definitely had to. It's, it's hard sometimes because then you um, you have to work with those employees still, so you don't want there to be tension. Um, so I just tried to communicate a lot um before it hit the grievance process.
So we've got a few extra minutes, um so I thought I'd give a very kind of second chance to do some ball of questions.
Sure.
So my, mine are easy, um so how long have you lived in South Row?
Um, I've, I lived on Bigelow Street, I was renting a house over there and then um five years ago, I moved to Pleasant Street. And then um five years ago, I moved to Pleasant Street.
Okay, so you lived here?
Six years, yeah.
Alright, um, okay, so as this, I'm gonna ask you and they're gonna know why I ask this, um, this is a gratuitous question, if you were in a town. That was um, like Southborough, um, fairly fluent, would you be surprised if a significant portion of town did not have water hydrants, power hydrants?
Yes.
Um. Would you think it's your responsibility to, to try to remedy that situation?
Yes, yes, that's a, that's um, public health and um drinking water, uh, obviously that's my background. But um hydrants, we, we try to have like. Every year we replace certain ones, but if you needed to install them, that's a, another situation and yeah, that's very important.
It's my name at this point.
Okay.
Last question, you're, I wanna make sure you understand the structure of your department, Wellesley. So are you physically separate from everything else, roads, whatever, are you all together?
No, we're at the same complex, um, one of the things.
Chance to interact.
Yeah.
Everybody with all aspects of D E P.
Yes, and one of the things that I try to do every day if I can, um, we stay till four, but. Um, the employees that um do more of the labor work, they leave at three. Um, so I try to go out to the time clock, they punch out every day and I would try to go out to the time clock and I think that that's where I get. The best information because during the day, they're kind of just talking about things and we talked about grievances. Um, that's how I'm able to kind of ward off some of that, um, just by listening to, you know. There was an issue with this and I, I would try to fix it before it got, you, you know, higher up the, the ladder.
So that's really interesting, so to be clear, you, you weren't leaving yet, but you go where everybody was clocking out just to kind of see what was going on and what people saying? I guess the modern version of a water cooler, um, okay, so that, that's very interesting, so now go back to your structure. You said a minute ago, there is a DPW water superintendent.
Yeah, so there is a DPW director, um, an assistant director, a town engineer. And there, that's kind of the one, two, three, and then every different department has a superintendent and an assistant superintendent. And then um, we also in water and sewer had a project engineer that was the position I started in. And then um, it kind of goes from there, we had two general foremen and they were my, they directly. Um, checked in with me every single day, um, one handles water treatment, one handles. More like the sewer and distribution side of things, um, but I get a daily. You know, what they're doing for the day, um, talk to them about what needs to be done and we would have a morning meeting. Not as much now because people are a little bit more scattered since um COVID, but. Before that, we would have a morning meeting every day and um, that's how I found out a lot about. You know, different issues at the treatment plant that they might have forgot to tell me the day before, um, and then I'm able to set up. You know, my priorities for the day, um, you know, who do I have to call, do we need this pump fixed, um, you know, things like that.
So I think you said a few minutes ago that the current DPW water superintendent, so I guess if you're direct.
He's my direct boss, yeah.
He or she is fairly new?
There, no, so he's retiring, um, the DPW director is fairly new and. My goal has always been, since I started working in the DPW, to be in charge of a DPW.
When is your direct boss retiring?
It's questionable, yeah. Yeah, so he technically is leaving, I think already, but he still is coming in all the time. I, I'm not really sure about, he comes in on Saturdays and Sundays too, so, um. I don't think he, I'm not sure of where he kind of is gonna fall.
But he hasn't been replaced.
So he, um, they, I think they're hiring somebody for that position and I think they're starting. This week or next week, I've been off this week, um, so I haven't met him yet, um, I didn't. I didn't interview for that job.
Yeah, so thank you, James. Thank you, um, so I think I have two follow-up questions, um, one, we didn't talk about field maintenance, so. BPW is responsible for field maintenance, but works very closely with recreation. On that, so can you explain if you have any familiarity with um mostly breasts, um, yes?
Um, so I did, the experience that I have is I did the layout for a lot of fields in town. Um, Perrin Park was a big job, if, if you're familiar with that, um, we had to regrade it and. Um, I don't have a lot of grasp per se experience, but I do know about field maintenance. I had to work with the Parks Department, especially when I was in engineering and do a lot of the layouts for the fields.
Great, thank you, um, and my second question is, given what you know about. The structure and the responsibility of the DPW in Southborough, um, what do you think your hurdles would be? Um, in terms of getting kind of to speed and being able to effectively manage all the operations?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's definitely, it's different than what I'm used to, um, just because, you know, it's more, it's not as. Segregated, um, so I would just probably need to visit all the different places, talk to the employees. Um, really get to know, I wouldn't wanna come in and change anything right away, um, I would wanna. Find out, you, you know, what are the issues, what are, um, what are things that work, what are things that don't work and then. If I needed to research, you know, how to make something better, I could just, I, I would do that.
Great, thank you.
Uh, one follow-up on, again, sort of breadth of services with DPW before, one of the topics that's frequently discussed. Disgusted, that they may, basically. Hot weed, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what experience do you have with that, how, how would you think you should deal with that?
Um. I don't really, I, I haven't, I don't have a lot of history with invasives, um, we had actually a. Person that, she does kind of all of that kind, you know, makes the determinations. I've only, when I've had to file things with the um D E P. Um, I've had to meet her out at certain locations and she's explained to me what is kind of what, but. That's something that I would probably need to, you know, research a little more.
Um, any other licenses, certification that would be useful like pesticides or water operator or?
So, um, the one thing that I kind of focused on was I took all the classes for procurement. Um, the state classes, that was very helpful in terms of contracts. Um, and once the assistant town engineer retired, um, I was. Pretty much the person that everybody in the DPW would call and ask, hey, you know, how do I do this, what's the, wh- what is? You know, what is the right procurement method or, you know, can I do this, I've actually had to. This was a difficult situation, but we actually had to, I, I talked to the town attorney because we couldn't. There was somebody that uh bid on a contract and we had to throw out the lowest bidder, which is tough. Um, but I spoke with, I had a good relationship with um our town attorney and we kind of went back and forth and then she said. You know, call this person at the, at the state and really find out if it went in, you know, if they. Went against us, would it, is this legal? So, um, but other than that, no, I don't have, um, our treatment plant operators have. Um, all of their licenses, so.
One more, back to the grant question, a huge amount of federal infrastructure. Flowing out there, do you have any particular connections, experience that could put you in a good position to get some of that money?
Um, no, but I could definitely look into it, I don't, um, I don't really deal with federal, I haven't done any federal grants.
And some follow-up questions that I have. First, do you have experience dealing directly with state agencies and how they interact with, you know. Wellesley DPW thinking of mass DOT, D E P, et cetera?
Um, I deal with the M W R A, um, we actually, I saw the, um, is it? Is there a connection that um they're trying to make with Southborough um in Hawkington? So Wellesley is actually looking into, if PFAS continues to be an issue. Um, how are we gonna get another M W R A connection because our treatment plants, it might not be. Cost-effective to use all of our treatment plants and our well water, so that is something that's currently going on, so I. Deal with the M W R A a bit, um, and. I've had dealings with the D E P, I don't have one particular person that I call over there, but.
And um, the other follow-up question I have is, um, a big responsibility for our new DPW superintendent that's kind of new. For two thousand and twenty-three is that it's very challenging labor market and um in addition to. Training and mentoring the employees that we have, there is fluidity in the labor market, people coming and going. So do you have any creative ideas about, um, you know, we're looking for a truck driver, everyone else in the state is looking for a truck driver?
Yeah.
What extra things we can do to track people?
I've thought of this, that I thought um targeting maybe trade schools would be a good way and to explain to, we. We had of an entry level position, it's called a group eleven, and we've got actually a couple of people. Um, into our, you know, become a truck driver. Just by getting this entry level that doesn't require a lot of the licenses and then helping those people over time, um. So having, you know, if they wanna go get their C D L or something like that, we have people in-house that can train. And um, that's, that's actually helped a lot, um, but also, just, I think. Telling people about, you know, what benefits there are to work for a DPW. Um, I've talked about this with Mass Waterworks just because everybody has been kind of dealing with the same thing. And like I said, just trying to get the word out there, um, I think trade schools or something like that would be a good place to start. Maybe.
Thank you, I don't think I have any other further follow-up questions while I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for coming in, so why don't you take um a few minutes and wrap this up for us? Anything else you wanna say that you didn't save the front, we, we love you.
Um, I think I covered a lot of, you know, who I am as a person, I. Like to interact with the employees, I think that if you give respect, um, you get. A lot more out of them, so I probably to a fault sometimes I have. Worked there for so long that some of the people that I work with are almost like family now, and I know that even if I left Wellesley, I would probably still. Interact with some of them, um, just because I've, I really like to adopt a culture of, you know. Working as a team, you know, making sure that people know that, I think if, if you let people know that they're. Valued, um, I think that goes a long way. So.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
So why don't we take another five-minute recess and I don't think I can get all, you can, just do it hard, it, it. Okay, so we are back in session at eleven oh nine A M. Okay, so we've had our two interviews, the two candidates that have been selected, um, so the um item now is decide whether we want. To make a decision today, whether we want to um postpone a decision, um, or something else. So I think I will start with Andrew.
I, I feel that I could um begin the discussion.
Are you ready to discuss?
I, I could discuss, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision, I mean, feel wow, it's not a decision.
I agree with that, I'm ready to discuss for sure, um, but I also, um. Have a vote, um, as far as what to do going forward to, so. Alright, so Andrew, why don't you start as far as, um, what do you think about which candidate?
Yeah, so starting with Mr. McNulty because he was first, one thing I was. Um, I was very impressed by his composure and demeanor and also that it's clear he's got this. Expertise and a lot of experience in water, sewer, you know, takes a lot of pride in the way his. Um, system runs, so, and kind of the, um. The next, um. For us to consider is the fact that our department is different and how is that gonna translate to highway? Uh, transportation, et cetera, I mean, he's pretty clear, you know, he really has some gaps there, but, um, I feel like he's. Open to. Uh, he's, that he's got the um kind of structure in place to absorb some information, you know, I think he said. When one of us asked a question like that, you know, you're just gonna, it's gonna take a year or so to become a little bit familiar. With the operation with the department before you can come and make a recommendation, he even mentioned. There to my question about environmental practices, you know, maybe you can come in and bring in a, a, a company that would do kind of an audit of the. Transfer station will give you kind of an example of, here are things you could do, how much it would cost, et cetera, et cetera, um. And I was also, you know, excited about, um. I thought Megan had a great question, answer to um the last question that I said about, we're looking for, um. Creative ways to try to fill recruit positions, you know, I think that the answer kind of demonstrated some, um. Creativity there, um, I like what she said about kind of using, you know, she's got good experience. Dealing with kind of customer service, um. Et- et cetera, um. I just, I feel like Mr. McNulty's, the, the, the kind of the way he presented himself kind of gave me some kind of comfort in. The way that, um, we could, he could handle some of the more kind of difficult things coming down. The pipe in terms of, um. Taking a fresh look at things and, um. And uh, you know, listening to people and um. Also, it's good that he's got the experience with the pavement management system too, so I think he would probably be my preference at this point.
Same.
Um, as usual, there's no perfect solution, I think, and I think uh each candidate actually had some interesting capabilities. And uh, again, it's kind of, I think, Andrew suggesting, uh, has, I think, more of the. Uh, connection with the employees kind of thing, listening, customer service, uh, experience there, which I think is particularly important. Uh, Mr. McNulty for me, um, that's what I think is a critical skill, it's a technical base, engineering. Which, uh, again, we could use external consultants for that kind of thing that we've, we've been doing, but I think there's this sort of a fundamental. Uh, technical analytical skill base there to be able to deal with those consultants and others, uh, they professional. Uh, DPW, Mass Block, the state, et cetera, framework with that common base. That gives him advantage for those kinds of things, and so, um, I, I think that, uh. Yeah, wonder about, uh. You know, how to weight those things, but uh my overall bias is, is any word, well. As the breadth of experience at this point, and the operational things, it's important to. Not necessarily that you, that you can't learn those things, but I think there are pressures now that the new person is gonna have to deal with immediately. And I think, again, Mr. McNulty's technical experience base gives him more leverage in terms of dealing. It would be nice to be able to mix and match, build our own new candidate, the strength of both, but we can't do that. We gotta pick one.
So I agree with everything that's been said, so I'm gonna try to add some other aspects of it. I think the number one priority in my mind for DPW is stability. And I think that if we were at a different point, and, and I know Kathy listed off a couple of meetings ago, everything that's in progress or getting ready to go from a DPW perspective, I think if we, if we weren't at that point with DPW, I think Ms. Condon would be a good fit. I think that Mr. McNulty brings with his background and his breadth of experience more than Ms. Condon, just because he's been given the opportunity to be responsible for all DP, DPW, whether it be, you know, three weeks or a week, you know, he, he has he seemed to be able to respond in more depth with other areas other than water. And so so I thi- I think that that's playing a lot into where I'm at, just the current makeup of, you know, where we're at in, in the town with DPW. I think that Joden and Wellesley are very different towns. And I think that the, probably the customer service that Ms. Condon spoke about is a result of the type of residents that she has, which, which I would, I would think is more similar to Southborough than Stone. But that doesn't mean that I don't think Mr. McNulty would be able to provide the type of customer service that we would all expect either. I think she seemed to maybe be more aggressive about getting involved earlier with residents and and I think that's just a result of her personality. I think they have very different personalities. So I, I think that just given the stability and his, him being comfortable with the budget and the capital and having two enterprise funds, I mean, we, you know, we're newer to the enterprise fund realm, and I think we're still trying to figure out water rates and him being involved in the water rate discussion, I think is very important. So I, I think I'm leaning towards Mr. McNulty too, just, you know, I, I think Ms. Condon would would be capable of doing it. I'm just not sure that she would be ready for what we would need her to be ready for now.
Day one.
Yep. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna not repeat what the previous said, because I agree, there's nothing, anybody said that I did previous, so and there's a film built on, on what you said. So, but I will say this right off the top, I don't think either are what I'm looking for today in this job because of the situations we have here. If this job was a water job, both of them would be qualified, but it's not. It's, as we talked about, it's a broad portfolio of pretty difficult areas that you gotta deal with, right? And neither one, currently at least, are dealing with that product quality. They may have in the past, but things change, right? So what they've done in the past, you know, is stale and not necessarily where it should be today. Of the two, I think Mr. McNulty is more ready for this job than Ms. Condon. I believe she does need some more seasoning for her step up. I think that this job is not the right one for her as far as her next step. We just don't know whether I think we've got the luxury of allowing Mr. McNulty to have the time to get up to speed on the areas that he's not up to speed with, as far as what I think the expectations of this town might be. And again, if we were having a smooth transition from the current or the, a, a person who was leaving to this one, I might think differently, but we don't. We know we've got, we've had a lot of controversy, we've got a lot of criticism. So I think the expectations are gonna be pretty high from the town as far as who succeeds and who's galligan. So therefore, I am not, I, I think I'm not ready to, to basically recommend appointing either one at this point. But that's just one vote. Sounds like maybe the three of you are ready to point Mr. McNulty. And I'm not
Not necessarily.
Hardly opposed to it. I'm just saying, I just, my reason really, they've got, you know, I, I like him both. I thought he was well prepared. I think he's mature. I think they both know how to deal with people. I was convinced with that. I think they both know. It's nice that they, they do supervise a equivalent number of people right now. I think I've got, they're used to, you know, twenty-five people or so to supervise. I think that's good. But I just would rather have someone that currently today is, you know, an assistant that has a broad portfolio that already deals with transfer stations and recycling and fields and cemeteries and definitely roads. Rather than someone who may have tinkered with it in the past, but right now it's focused water. Someone, it may be you, Mark, maybe one of you had said recently that you thought the most important job of DPW was water. And I, I didn't say anything, but I don't agree with that. I think water has gone pretty smoothly over the years. And we've got the, the issue with Hawkington, I think we're, we're dealing with. But I'd say it's the other parts that haven't gone as smoothly, that I really want someone that understands how to do road projects. And truly, you know, get us back on a good level standing with, with the town and have the town have confidence that this person really can deal with that, knows how to deal with people. I think both know how to deal with people. So I was very impressed with her answer as far as how they notified people or how they dealt with the COVID problem with water, to be exact. I thought that was a great answer. And so good for her. So I want both of them to be able to be that way, you know, as far as projects here and they notify people, make sure they do everything they can to eliminate any disruption for projects that we done. So I'm just not ready for either one, but I would rank them the same way you guys are, Mr. McNulty, for him.
One thing I would like to say is that, you know, even though I, I have a preference, I thought this, I found an excellent job. And I think, you know, as someone fucking closer to her and age range, she's doing the exact right thing by, you know, being ambitious and trying to look ahead with advance her career. So I mean, I think that she's someone to continue to kind of keep in touch with and you know, there's ways maybe to help us out in the future. And she, you know, she's a resident, hopefully we can get her more involved and but I was impressed by her, you know, she's got some intellectual curiosity and, you know, learning about getting involved in some professional organizations and so, you know, that's one of the these are tough decisions you have to make, but there's also meet interesting people. And so just wanted to say that about her, you know, she should certainly be applauded for stepping up and going through this process.
One more thing, let me ask Mark if we're gonna further, our interim he, his agreement is through a certain date, he's got an idea of how long it's gonna, he, he has said, I'm only gonna do it for, for so long.
At this point, we have the agreements in place through the end of February.
Cause he said he'd go first.
Haven't had an opportunity to have that special, so I guess it would, I mean, if, if we, if, if the board makes a decision to move forward and everything, you know, tonight, next week, today, next week, you know, then I think that that timeframe is probably workable. However, if, if the board decides to take an alternate path, obviously, you know, and I can, I'll be, I'll be having that discussion with them, just to, just to gauge as to you know, his availability beyond what we initially thought.
I was just gonna add, I don't think either one are familiar with what they'd be walking into. And that's, that is definitely concerning for me, on both of them. So I, I wouldn't say that I'm ready to take a position on, on Mr. McNulty would be my preference. But I, I am not I'm, I'm not in a position to vote for that right now. And of course, the problem that Andrew referred to is the job market is so tight. It's not like, you know, if we decide to not offer either candidate the job that Mark and Vanessa are gonna come back with, you know, a robust pool of new candidates. It's, it's probably not gonna happen.
It was, it was interesting to hear that even in some of these communities that you're not getting someone that checks the boxes. This content talked about having this entry level position that we can grow somebody into, and we don't have the ability you know, to do something like that, but, but that's what we're doing, you know, we're, we're doing that, right? Doing it somewhat successfully right now with our number two in IT. You know, but, but that is what we're going to see. I think that's the new paradigm when it comes to replacing employees who retire or move on. You know, we have times where we have to make a tough decision, like this is a tough decision about whether to make a decision. But just kind of thinking about odds, you know, what is the chance that if we'd say, okay, let's see if there are any other candidates, some other recruitment process where we get someone who meets all these options. I mean, I just think about that in person, that the odds are gonna be that it's probably gonna be the same difficult, you know? It's a There are five other recruitment processes open right now. Yeah. Around the area.
And that's more than what we're hoping.
That was more that was open to the district.
And to the point of the stability. I mean, we could have now an interim in place while even just the next three months are gonna be interesting, right? So we can have an interim, a person who has maybe kind of a little bit less at stake in seeing kind of successful outcomes or you take a chance, you bring someone in and then I think there's a little bit more stability of the, the process, we make a decision, we decide to make a decision, we make a decision, rather than I just don't think, you know, you may lose the candidates that you have, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Kathy, to your point about the water seems to be working well, and that's true. I think that, that again, is good in the scouting experience that has been heard of over the years, and so that's a very natural thing to, to do there. Sadly, I think it's awfully unusual to find somebody who has got great experience across twenty-seven different disciplines here, you know, that I think about the DPW directors, I see as well. There are people who have, you know, specialization in certain areas, or in certain areas, but much more likely to find someone more focused on water or sewer or roads or whatever there, or branch out of the other. One of the reasons for I'm looking for the technical expertise here in, under a lot of this, I think that translates into many of these areas, the way of thinking about processes that can be effective in terms of managing whether they can translate that or not. Another, another trick, I think Mr. McNulty, for me, I think if we were to offer the job, I think part of the process often be a push to focus substantially on the customer service side. Again, to earlier point here, I don't think either of those circumstances are gonna be setting in, and I think that's a key strength to be able to sort of deal with the customer service side, communication, the republic, etc. First step of the process.
Just because Mr. McNulty has got more experience, I think that he could probably handle that maybe better just because he has more time to have seen things and, and maybe develop a little bit of thicker skin over time. So we want to hear what you're gonna say too, but one more thing to so I hear you and I know as far as, if we were to pass on these two, that we do run the rest that there's, you know, there's no one. And we have an interim who we think is doing a good, is gonna do the job. Karen said she likes him. But he's an interim, he's retired, he's not gonna do this forever. We know that for sure. He does not want the job. He just So it's, I just wish we could find someone that has been an assistant in a place like ours where you do cover, and that's what I'm looking for. It just may not exist. It's very good to, to step up. So I just don't know how many of those are out there and, you know, whether they're really ready to step up. So that's what I was looking for.
And I've talked to a few people about that as well, and the feedback I get that, gee, I don't think of anybody off the top of my head. They may be out there, the question is how you get them. Mark, you've looked at the recruiter side of it, and there's a lot of activity there. There's a thing of hers.
There's a lot of people that are looking. There's not a lot of people who are applying. And, you know, and, you know, the board is aware, I think, that, you know, we've talked to processes and I think I talked to a couple of you. You know, where we had process with the number two in IT, you know, we thought we had somebody, right? The board interviewed, the board liked them, the board appointed them. They signed up, they signed, they, they, they signed the letter and then decided, you know, and then their current employer, you know, gave them a better offer to stay. So
Contagion that, no, no.
No, I, I, it is a, it is a whole different, you know, I, I, I talk a lot about you know, what, you know, Ms. Hale has been able to do through processes and, and, you know, and things to be able to get good people in here. We're a very attractive community, right? I think for, for a lot of things, you know, in terms of our stability, in terms of our financial makeup, in terms of, you know, a lot of things. And it's difficult, it should be easier for the, for those type of communities to attract people, but we're finding the same challenges that everybody's finding. So it's, it's, it is, it is difficult. Like I said, you know, there are five other processes for, for, you know, DPW heads right now that are, they're out there. So people are gonna be, you know, for that limited pool, there's gonna be more competition for the, you know, the same grouping of people.
One other thought to add to the mix is that for the areas where the candidates just don't have as much experience but are important to Southborough transfer station, road, roadway projects, etc. One opportunity you do have is if you go into offer the position, then in a contract negotiation, you say that we're gonna, you know, set some goals and then have a review next two, three years, you can pretty clearly define, you know, one of the things we want you to do is to in your next annual review, just you have a whole year to do it. Come to us and just give us a couple of kind of concrete bullet points about yeah, demonstrate some progress, things to educate yourself and the class, work on an initiative with someone.
See, what I'm afraid of, you know, when you sit down and talk to Karen in your space to face and she's in her bailiwick and she's talking about how this road used to this and that, she's really good. And she knows what she's talking about and she gets into detail that I don't understand because it's so, it's, it's complicated, right? It really is. It's not just something you're gonna pick up in a day or so, you know? So that's still what worries me is that the other things that are not their primary focus are gonna take quite a while to be picked up by either person, probably longer form is kind of than Mr. McNulty. But I'm still worried about that, that time, that learning time, that learning curve in that based on what's happened the last couple of years that it, it's gonna, you know, it, we start again, right? And we end up in, you know, the same, the thing we have found ourselves in with Karen.
So Mark, I can ask this question to you, based on your experience of seeing times where the town has done this, are there, have there been other times where the town has done this where we've looked and we find that there's not the, the absolutely perfect candidate that is exactly fit for Southborough and that you know, instead we did a search and then, you know, deferred, have any examples like that that we have and how they I, I think, you know, what you're suggesting is to, to not make an appointment. You're throwing out there for discussion, not making a plan and then having further reporting, I mean, have we done that before? I think I think every search I can recall actually led to an appointment.
Since, since, well, since I've been here, every time that we've had finalists, we've made an appointment. You know, I mean, that, that is an option, you know, for the board. You know, again, I think, you know, you're not gonna find the perfect candidate, you know, you know, after the, the, you know, Ms. Hale and her group had, had taken a run through the first round. We did have a conversation with one of the search cons, with a search consultant who, you know, had basically the same thing to Mr. Stivers. You know, it just said that, you know, really, there's nobody out there, there's no names I can give you and I'm happy to take your money and do a search for you. I'm just not sure I'm gonna give you a better pool. You know, so it's, you know, make no promises. You know, so it's, you know, make no promises that you're not gonna go through this again. And you're gonna be sitting, you know, in a same, uh, you know, similar or potentially worse, you know, situation.
And that's where I pause, and that's my cause. Uh, that's where I'm really concerned that, again, given this job market, which we all know. It, it, it's a cross board, right? What do you see with the numbers that came in today for employment? I mean, it's, it's not going away. Um, so that's where I'm really concerned is that, um. If this labor market is just too tight and it's gonna stay tight for a long time. And therefore, uh, we really are going to be between a rock and a hard place, um, when our interim says. I'm interim, I'm, I'm out of here, um, I, I don't know what I can do, so then we've got to find another interim. So, uh, again, um, I think either one could grow into this job, right? Um, so I think if we decide today to appoint one or the other, that we have to understand that it's on us. To help that person, we can't just say, put it in a, you know, contract, go, go, go do this and come back in a year. We've really got to actively help this person get up to speed. And understand this talent, right, what they're walking into as far as some of the issues go, but we've just gotta commit to do that if, if, if this is what we're gonna do.
But I will say, I mean, we do have, you know, a good group of departments, you know, and, and that team approach. That Miss Condon referred to that we talked about in her, in my interview with her, um, you know, is, is true. Uh, not only in that department, but also with our department heads, very supportive each other and in terms of, you know, collaboration, um. Not gonna let somebody fail, okay, so, um, but, but again, and I, and I'm. You know, reluctantly somewhat resigned to the fact that you're not gonna get the candidate that we all want that checks all the boxes. I mean, when I looked at these two finalists, you know, and I'm thinking about what's important to Miss Nauske, what's important with that. You know, what's important to each of you, and I'm like, great, this is gonna check some of your boxes and some of your, but no one checks them all. Right? So I think it, it comes down to that's what the board is somewhat struggling with, that I'm sensing is, is that, you know, you, you know, who checks it up? And, and, and checks the ones that you feel are important. When we, when we hired, um, Mr. Hammond for Senior I T Specialist, um. You know, we wanted higher level of technical ability. But we took someone who had, um, great customer service skills. And, you know, a good, um, uh, base technical ability, and now he's, now we're growing in with his certifications and building him. Into what we need the position to be, you've got to decide what skill sets. You feel are intangibles that you want someone coming in with. And then you can then build on those, you know, with the other things. I think the pavement management system that we're putting in place, I know you, you know, you had said that roads, you know, roads are important, everyone, you know. Roads touch everybody every day, and I, I do agree that's important, but we have a system now coming into place which is going to help. To manage those in a better and a more efficient and a more structured way, um. You know, I, I, I think we do have things in place, we have good people, uh, in our D P W. Who can help to, you know, code people up and bring people up to speed, you know, on these things, um. You know, there's gonna be, you know, have to be an investment with me, um, you know, um, with, with whoever, you know, assumes that position. Um, you know, there's gonna be, you know, support structure from, from me as well, different departments, you know, to help, to help get that person up to speed and transition. Again, some things will be easier than others, I'm not sure cemeteries are a huge lift. Um, you know, uh, I think, you know, cemetery and fields, it's a maintenance contract, right? Understanding the processes and everything is gonna, you know, is, is, is gonna be a little bit easier. Suggesting change and recommending improvements may take a little bit longer. So Kathy, you know, maybe one concern I think you might have is, like, we'll take what's one of the biggest things in the next couple of years. That's not covered by water and sewer, portable road, right? What's that like to, to know, you know? So one of the first things Mr. McNulty said, manage thirty five million dollars. Range four hundred thousand finally, I mean, so I think some of the skills in managing a. Uh, improvements to a pump station, right? Some of the technical details are different, but I think some of those skills, you know. Are translated to a large scale capital for, it's a work, it's managing. Contractors staying on budget, something unexpected happens, you boom or wanna find a way to deal with it.
Yeah, that is, that is true, um. So the analogy with Hassan, I think is probably, it's an, it's an analogy, it's important because he, you know, he didn't come in as the director. And we're talking about, we're talking about where the buck stops, right, right, direct, um. And, you know, um, get off to a bad start, it's kind of hard to recover, um, as we've seen, so we've got it. We've got it, maybe we've got to strive to this now, you've got, we've got the P W P B issue still hanging out there, you know, we had a really good group. There that was active, functional, um, that could help, that we said that, that helped too, but we don't. Um, so it's really us at this point, um, and Mark and Vanessa to, to truly make this work if we decide that. Um, we believe we should think it's important.
Your question.
The third thing I wanted to add in and ask was some department heads that we hired that were very similar to this situation. We made a stipend, um, to either that department head in a neighboring community. Or someone that had a very similar skill set of something, you know, we needed to work on. So I think that's part of the professional development plan too, having someone, um, one of these candidates wherever the board chooses. Could meet with on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, you know, for new project plans or, you know, goals and so forth. That's not all.
Kathy, to your earlier question, um, I'd be interested if they don't have any recommendations, suggestions. Especially if you think it's a good decision, bad decision.
Well, I, I, I'd rather not give you my recommendation, and this is your point, so I, you know, uh.
No, no fatal flaws that you saw.
I, I, I think you, I think you've seen that you've got, you know, two very different candidates who. Check some of the same, but a lot of different boxes, um, you know, I think both of them, um, can be. Um, can become valuable members of the team, um. And, uh, I think, you know, they'll, they'll have different learning curves in different places. So, um, okay, but again, very different, very, you know, as you saw, different approaches, I think, to, you know, to the position.
Again, I think that for me, it's a question of balance and sort of competing factors here in the sense that I think the. One is the ability to step into something with ongoing serious challenges. And again, my view is this is probably as an advantage. Second, uh, terms of fundamental technical strength, not only in terms of handling. Projects, but in terms of dealing with the partner such as vendors or. State agencies, et cetera, et cetera, um, I think that he's got the edge on that as well. I think that again, I give this kind of, uh, customer service probably, that's something that again, I think. We can support and make it clear that we did have a position, Mr. McNulty. It be focused on the important part of his evaluation going forward. There may be some other factors as well there, to me, that balances against, uh, what happens if you don't make a decision. I think the chances of finding somebody who's gonna be perfect or close to zero. If they're perfect, they're probably very happy and very tightly tied to another organization, I think, but, uh. So to me, that's the real risk as well. That lacks continuity, and continuity is an important thing here at. An interim basis for extended period of time, he's pretty much. Yes, I, I lean toward making an offer, but I can recommit.
I mean, I, I feel like I will. Won't entertain emotion, but I would consider. First question, make a decision, make a decision now. I'm just worried about post, post-firm, right, about no guarantee whatsoever, it leads to a different decision. Good chance you lose some of the candidates, I also think that. Um, a lot of effort went into that buying the candidates and, um, bringing them here, and I think, you know. The consensus, I think I'm hearing is you got, you got two solid choices to make a decision, took work to get to the point where you got two solid choices. And we've had a good discussion about the, um. Subject matter expertise gaps. I'm not as worried about them, um, but, yeah, we can work as a team to, um, put in, play some structure. Another thing that we have talked about, it's kind of been done in some fashion, but not as much as just like a quarterly, not just even just a world report, just. Every quarter, D P W super that comes into this left board meeting, even it's just ten to one fifty minutes. Boom, boom, you know, we got an opportunity to ask them questions and they update us. In addition to some base time regularly at a meeting in addition to what we're doing, so, um. That's how long, so I would go to a point. It's funny, I just wouldn't say tonight, because I'm used to everything being.
Well, we're doing better than. So, um, so you're inclined to a point, Sam?
Um, I would mind.
Chelsea?
I, I have a lot of the same concerns that you do, I. But I don't know if they outweigh. The chances of us moving. What I, what I would say is a solid opportunity, right? And I think. As Andrew pointed out, he has a lot of the transferable skills, um, that could help in that. And, and he does bring different, different skillsets that we don't have today, so I think there's a value in that too. I guess, um. I would like to know, and I know we're not gonna have an answer today on this, but if we could continue to have our. You know, assuming the interim works out and he has experience in some of the areas that we're concerned about. That we could tap in, continue to tap into him as we need to and just keep that communication line open. So that we have another set of expertise if we need it, I guess, you know, if we can mitigate that risk, um. Then I would be more comfortable with, with that, I, I, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure it's worth. Um, risking losing what we have in front of us to go out to find something that doesn't.
So, um, to go a little bit further than what you said about quarterly meetings, I think we have to go much further than that, at least initially. So, I, you know, I think we're gonna have to have one with liaison, um, directly, uh, constantly, can we get this going? I like the idea of the interim being able to help, you know, if he gets, you know, he'll, he'll, he'll pull on stuff, you know? Um, I don't remember his background, you know, as far as what his, um, portfolio is, but I like the idea of that. Ms. Gallican has offered to help, um, with a new person and helping the transition, so we've got her, um, to, to come back and the transition. So, um. I'm willing to, I, I just, you know, there's so many projects that are ongoing right now, you know, I just hate to, um. Not keep these things going smoothly, you know, I know some of them are close to being done, and too. Uh, so I just would like to, to, to do this, I am.
Well, look at, look at what we brought, Mr. Davidson, as recreation director. Okay, how many projects were, were, were laying there in various states though, right?
Yes.
And, and how long did it take to bring all of those to conclusion, everything and that, and then, and I, I will, I will. I will say quite successfully, you know, some, somewhat, right, so, you know, and, and I think. You know, some of these projects that we're talking about, public works and everything and that, you know, um. I, I, I think, you know, could use a. Fresh perspective, you know, I think would benefit from a fresh perspective. So I think that, that, that is a, um, I think it's an opportunity, not a negative, you know, on some of this stuff.
Kathy, to your point, though, I think that that would be an interesting part of a conversation. They, this is part of the deal, and, uh, there are people who, uh, not be comfortable with helping, of course. And so I think that would be an important thing to lay out, set that expectation to do go in the direction. That would be interesting.
I, I mean, if you do go down this road today, understand that any appointment is obviously conditional upon. That successful negotiation of a contract and a background check, so all of that still needs to be, if we check reference. We have references, so we need those all, we've started, that we're in different stages with both candidates, but when they gave us the information, but.
I'd still like to talk to his, his boss, right, and to say, um. What do you think? And get his opinion, um, one thing that I believe Mr. McNulty implied. Um, almost overtly is that he's had very little turnover in his staff, you know, which is really great. I mean, as he said, you get one thing to hire some new, you don't wanna lose people either, you gotta keep the people you have, um, try to keep, you know, good people. Um, okay, um, so I, I'm going to, I'm agreeing with the preview.
Under duress or?
No, it's not, it's no, I liked him a lot, and remember, we do have water issues coming up. We've got, we've really got to get the rates set, he said he had that rate structure, and so we want him to do the same thing here, you want to go.
He, he, that, that's because they have zero cost raw product there, you know, the wells, so they can keep that there.
And we heard he passed all day long today, so he passed.
But you know what was interesting that Mr. McNulty said is that, you know, they have not had a rate increase for like five years? Does that sound a little familiar?
Yeah.
Right? We didn't have one for a while, and then what happened? Okay, and now we're taking, you know, we're trying to, you know, make the structure more stable and more sustainable. And everything, so I, I tried not to laugh when he said that, because it's like, yes, no, we were in that position of having not raised them and. And then, but when you had to.
But he did say they were about to have one. But so that water knowledge, and, you know, we've got one I M A in place, we may have a second I M A, so you want someone to really be able to manage those, right? So, um, that water is really will be helpful, um, as far as I could. So thank you.
Yeah. I mean, yes, I, this is, this is a very critical decision.
So do we want to defer the vote on this, or do we want to do it at this point?
I'm ready to do it, I mean, deferring is, well, still a while, but I don't think I'm likely to come up with a difference.
I think if I, if, I think if I thought I would change from candidate selection. Then I'd feel differently, and I, you know, I think, you know, weighing whether somebody's gonna go, go on and find something else. I think if we, we wait, we're still at risk of that, right? So that's.
As Mark says, we may not reach an agreement.
Right?
That's right, right, that, that risk is still there, no matter what.
Right.
But it really is a, it's a, it's a, um, seller's market right now, and so therefore we run that risk no matter what, um. So, Andrew?
Well, I'll make a motion if you want. Make, I move that we appoint Phil McNulty as D P W superintendent, subject to successful. Please from contract negotiations and that, and references.
All in favor? Four zero. Okay. Okay, so, um, as far as next steps, um, the last time we did this with Chief Noel, we appointed two people. We basically, um, laid the charge to try to get the contract negotiated, et cetera, et cetera, um. Can go ahead and decide that today, um. Reach out to him and see what he thinks, um, make sure he's still. Feel a little want to do this, right? So, um, Andrew and Chelsea did, Chief Noel, um, Sam, you wanna do?
I'd like to do Chelsea.
I'm willing. He likes voting on the final product. I'm willing to do it and, um, feel like I know the issues, yeah, um, having participated in.
So you two wanna do it?
You guys have the experience.
Okay, yeah, so the same team, Chelsea, Andrew, yeah, okay.
Contracted issues.
This one, everyone, what, also this, everyone has been very different, right?
Yeah.
In terms of.
Okay.
This one is in ways a little bit, um. Doesn't have some of the time pressure that. Some of the others had, it's, it's different, everyone's a little different, but.
So make sure I'm right about this, Vanessa. So make sure I'm right about this, Vanessa, Mark, and when a person has refused themselves from a matter, um. Our form is still the same? Still three, not two?
Yes.
I lost you there.
So got four that are sitting for this matter, right, right, so I'm just trying to make sure we haven't created a form with the two of you.
Put your forms, email, form.
It's true, so it's not two. So it's it's three anyway, so good point. Okay, all right, so I think we're done for the day.
Okay.
Fortune George.
Second.
All in favor?
Who who's gonna call?
I'll call. I'll call both.
They are watching.
Do I have their phone numbers, Vanessa? Um, I know some things were blacked out in. Yes.